So for those of you who don't know, all the 4th graders across the state of Maryland do a essay contest where if I were a mayor. And then the Maryland Municipal League has a committee that picks winners from each area and then I also pick my favorites. And Gabby's essay was incredible and I'll tell you it's one of my favorite things to do as mayor to get to read these essays. Cause if you need faith in our future, just talk to 4th graders. They are incredible. So I do have a special recognition for you for your Mayor's Choice Award essay. This is for you. And this is for you. And thank you mom and dad. You guys should be super proud. And to your teacher, who was your teacher at Perry Mountain, Ms. Townsend? Thank her too for having her class participate in this. It's really a joy every year. So congratulations. And thank you for your kind heart and spirit. I hope you keep that always.
Okay, here we go. Good smile. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you guys want to come up and get a picture? Oh, you're fine.
Sound one real quick of the good looking females and then I'll enjoy it. Am I wearing clothes?
That's a great picture.
Here we go. One, two, three. Good smile. One, two, three.
All right. Up first today, we have an MOU with the United States Postal Service.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. What I have attached is a proposed memorandum of understanding that would provide security at the United States Post Office until a final agreement can be reached between the United States Postal Inspection Service and Governor Hogan, i.e. the state mayor.
Are you guys good to go with the MOU?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We'll put that, yeah, for approval in the special session later.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council.
All right. City event sponsorship request. Brittany, our community engagement officer. This is your first time up here.
All right. So before we jump into this, there is an event that we hold traditionally Holly Fest, which is scheduled for November 21st. However, the Maryland Theaters event for Saturday, November 19th, has been canceled. So they've offered if we want to do that event on the Saturday this year, we can do so. And we would be able to do the Christmas tree lighting. We were thinking about adding a makers market, having handmade homemade market on South Potomac Street and Holly Fest. So make it a larger event. So I just needed, okay. You guys are good with that? Okay. Excellent. All right. So now the reason why I'm here, event sponsorships. So as you can see, at the bottom of that first page that I provided, is for FY '22 and FY '23 projected. We exceeded the amount by 22 and the projected amount also well exceeds for FY '23. So if you flip over to your spreadsheet, I did a breakdown of what we've done in the past for the last several years and what is being requested. What was requested last year and what is being requested this year. I'm just looking for guidance because it is such a large, over budget situation. So just looking for, we have three events that request $10,000. That takes up a big chunk of the budget for events. So it's really up to you as mayor and council, do we want to continue providing that monetary amount for those events? Do we want to set a limit on how much? Does it even matter? So that's up for discussion right now.
I will say that I'll say to the club that requested the $10,000 that came, is that the request that came to me some time ago?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think they are requesting that amount any longer.
Okay.
I can double check for sure, but I'm almost certain that they are happy with what they normally get and the in-kind donations that the city provides for the Mummer's Parade.
Okay. Perfect. So then that would...
I can verify that, but I'm almost positive.
And that was a big question that I had. And then just thinking moving forward, if we do give $10,000 to a few events, then that takes away from if we get new events. So I have, we have two new events coming, Watches and Whiskey, which if you have any questions, Court is here to represent that. That's also through Maryland Watch Works. We have Fiber Fest, which is being put on by the yarn shop. So those are two new events, but me being in this position, I would love to see more groups, organizations, businesses come to us with requests with different events. Because to me, that's what makes up diversity in a city is not me being the one to plan it, but different groups and organizations coming with different requests.
So we could, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, we could do maybe one or two ways, put a cap on it. Like say it's $5,000 or a percentage of the total budget. I mean, if we're giving someone $5,000 in the whole event, $7,000 and we're giving someone else $5,000, then it's $70,000. I think that makes a difference.
Well, and I think the amount of people that come downtown too. If you look at the St. Patrick's Day Run Fest, you know, $2,500 sponsorship, that's, you know, a lot of people that day. That patronize the restaurants and stuff like that, you know, versus maybe a smaller event that, you know, with the cap is what I'm saying. You know.
And I will just share with you, so this year, Maryland Main Street, in the past, you could apply for whatever amount you wanted to. This year, they put a cap on that to make it more equitable. So they put a cap at 25,000. So previously, some communities may have gotten 50,000, but this year their max is 25,000. So the state has done something similar for their Main Street program. So I'm just looking for advice on how to move forward. We can cap at 5,000 or we could do a percentage of the overall budget.
I like the percentage of the overall budget idea. And how many people it reaches to. I think if you have something, like she was saying, in the donut drop that brings a lot of people downtown. But then you have other things that don't really bring a lot of people. I don't think they should be able to get $10,000.
Right. I think to be able to gauge that, if the organization was able to say how many they anticipated to bring downtown, maybe that's how we determine the amount of the level of sponsorship. I don't know if that's... I know they all hope for thousands and thousands of people, but I don't know how many are going to go to the art walk. I love that. But you know, how many people are really going to come down? I say that, but I also, people are ready to do things. You know, people want new things. They feel the energy downtown. So I think that it's important that we don't, you know, like make a minimal contribution.
The other recommendation someone suggested is maybe we set a chunk of money aside specifically for new events.
Yeah.
So...
Like gearing it up, like we're going to help you and...
To help you.
Yeah.
Kind of like how the Black Empowerment summit was a new event.
Yes. And that, and I don't think that actually came out of this budget. It came out from a different place. But I did include it in here since technically that should be an event type of sponsorship.
I like the idea of having a fund for new events too.
I do too.
I do too.
Yeah.
Court, have you?
Where'd he go?
Do you plan on asking the county for any sponsorship?
We've asked the CBD and the city. And this is our second year doing the event. We did it last year on our own. We had about 240 people. We had 22 micro watch brands. And we brought people from New England, Illinois. We even had two Swiss watch brands that came here to present itself. We sold one watch for $14,000 at the event. It's a very potent event. This year, we're adding eight additional Maryland spear companies. So we'll have a large addition.
So something set to the side and then a percentage of the budget?
Yeah. I think that sounds good.
Does that sound easy enough for you to regulate?
I think let's do that for this year and then I can report back maybe halfway through and we'll see where we are, how we're doing with funds and see if we want to do the same for next year or if we want to reexamine what works.
Yeah, because we need a process.
Yes.
Especially with the new events, you know, like how do you... Stop.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Of what? The budget?
Right here.
Oh, what percentage do we want?
Oh, that important number. Just a percentage. Pick one. He's not ready yet. He's not ready.
He's not warmed up.
Not ready yet.
I mean, I don't know about percentage. I think that you should limit new events to a specific figure though.
Right. I think that's what we were saying.
I don't, I see the two differently. I don't, I don't think it should be based on percentage. I think you should limit new events to like a smaller figure like...
I do too.
I don't know what the right number is. Yeah, I mean, that for me seems to be a more agreeable figure.
Talking of the event's budget, a percentage of the event's budget, not of our city budget.
If their budget is $7,000, you don't want to give them $5,000 of the dollars.
I mean, I think you look up to a percentage that...
And I believe they have to be set. I believe you have to have events that are, you know, that are historical.
Proven.
And then new events. And I think there has to be a budget and amounts set aside for new events. And I think those will have to, should come back to mayor and council on a one-on-one basis, given, given what the event is bringing to the city of Vegas town. But I do believe you ought to have a percentage for historical events for events that we already constantly find.
And we probably couldn't go back in history and see like what their budget was to see what these numbers are, could we? To see if that's like a...
Possibly. When they submit their application, they do have to submit their overall budget.
So you ought to have...
Can we maybe get that information to make a decision?
Yeah. And then we can see like where...
Then you can make a logical decision based on what a concept.
And we also work, we also work under the not to exceed, but then only pay when invoiced. So if the invoice amount does not equal the not to exceed amount, then you've got that amount saved that we could put back into a new event side of the ledger, I guess.
Okay. I'll take a look at that, get some figures together and then you come back.
Yep.
Perfect. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the follow-up to public hearing A-2022-01, annexation of Ungar Properties LLC.
Who knows?
Hi.
Following up on the hearing we had two weeks ago, which was a hearing for the requested annexation of 150 acre farm owned by Ungar Properties LLC at 1302 Virginia Avenue, which is basically back in behind Ted's Run- between Ted's Run and the railroad tracks. There's a big farm back there. They've requested our annexation, requested armad zoning, which is the city's lowest density zoning and it's compatible with what the county's current zoning is. And so at the hearing, before the hearing, we heard from one resident concerned about traffic and school capacity issues. We have not heard from anyone since the hearing.
Do you guys have any additional questions for Kathy, a follow-up since the public hearing?
I have two comments. The first is, I appreciate the responses to the questions that I raised, especially your response to number one with school districts and capacity. I think that exactly the way you responded is exactly the way things are. And so I appreciate that. And I agree, I don't see there being this awareness or initiative at the county level. awareness or, or initiative at the county level to address that, that issue in any proactive manner. But for me, as I said in my email, number seven, parks and open space. So do we have anything within the code that says, and I'm trying to think of, of, you know, how municipalities and other jurisdictions may address this item where they say, I, I guess maybe I'm just used to being in Frederick County where, you know, providing a playground is, is pretty common for basically cost of doing business when you build a residential neighborhood. And so do we have anything within our code, because I see you saying that that'll be addressed at the planning stage, but is there something there that says you have to provide, you know,
Certain amount.
A playground, a percent, like some usable space, not the edge of a stormwater management pond, or, or, you know, counting the forested area as, as, you know, uh, you know, the play area or the open space, the recreational space, because that just, it just isn't, and so just...
Our code for straight subdivisions, not puts, but straight subdivisions like which is being proposed here, once you get above a certain density, you're required to set aside open space for playgrounds and things like that. What's being proposed here is below that density, but they are proposing, we, we have seen a concept plan, the planning commission has seen a concept plan from this contact purchaser, and they are showing open space, and it's not forested con, it's usable space.
So when you say they're providing space, again, I guess, you know, I'm, you know, thinking of, of, you know, developments in in those other jurisdictions where they have to provide the stuff. In other words, the developer provides the totlot that goes into that recreational space that that neighborhood will eventually then use.
And we often get totlots in developments, like Court Park, which wasn't required to provide a totlot, has a totlot.
Right.
Little tiny one, but they have one. And Collegiate Acres created a totlot, and then it turned around and donated that land to the city, so now it's a city park at Collegiate Acres.
That's the one that I guess is the best reference for me, is as being the one that I think the way it should work. You know, and so I'm just, I wanna make sure that through that process...
And the code encourages that, if people, um, wanna create a park and wanna offer it to the city, and if the city wants to take it, we're not saying the city's always gonna take it, because there's budgetary impact, but it is in the co, code to encourage that sort of thing.
There, there definitely is a budgetary impact, but there's also a budgetary impact when you, you add, and let's just say there's 300 houses, right? And this tract of land, we're going to have to add in some manner, somewhere, park space that accommodates that additional, you know, 900, you know, people, and there's 300 houses in, in some form. In fact, Frederick County has an actual formula, you know, that, that it does that evaluation on an annual basis, which is part and parcel to the, to the distribu, distribution of those parks funds, which I know in Washington County, we don't get that. It isn't a 50-50 split, it's just sort of, you know, what rises to the top as, as availability allows it.
Well, the concept plan they shared with us, there is plenty of room for a totlot, and we can certainly bring that up with them when it comes time for their formal submission, which is not yet, of course, since they're not in the city.
And I will reiterate, as I said at the meeting, you know, I, and I think that, that the representative for the applicant stated, you know, that gets decided later. This is this body's chance to make those determining factors, in other words, so, you know what I mean? If there, if there are conditions of annexation you wanna ask for, this is your opportunity. Once it's annexed, then it just falls within whatever the code requires, or, or encourages, or, you know, or, or may provide for, so. That to me is, I would be less...
So you wanna make annex, a requirement for annexation of having a certain percentage of
I guess I'd be less...
Open space that could be developed until...
Yeah, well, I think they should provide the equipment. I do, I would be less inclined if it wasn't, if it was a, a parcel of land of a smaller nature, but this is a pretty sizable chunk of residential property being brought into the city. And so that, that's why I just look at it that way. If it was, you know, 10 acres and, and, and 40 houses, that's one thing, but we're talking about a much larger, you know, area that's kinda be on the edge of the city removed from...
The closest you would have would be town.
Over the county or city park, right?
Well, they are planning to set aside quite a bit of open space. We didn't get into the level of detail about, are you gonna do a totlot or not? But and there, the applicant's representative is in the audience if you wanted to have a conversation with them about totlots.
Yeah, I don't think for us, we need to accept to, to, to make a determination whether we think that that's a critical component, we want to be a condition of annexation, like that's how I, you know, see that.
Okay. So this'll be a good time to find out?
So are you making a recommendation?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Figure out some kind of a
That the development plan included a totlot.
But otherwise, good for approval of the...
No hobby horses.
I don't think they do those anymore.
I say hobby horse.
No one has those things.
You mean the thing on the spree? They don't do that anymore.
They don't do that, they sound dangerous.
Well, they're down at, they're down in Woodland Way Park.
I think so.
I mean, they've been there a while.
You can put your green kids on that thing.
I put mine on it. I put mine on it, and they don't go.
It would probably be more like, what's at Collegiate Acres, is what people put in new subdivisions.
And like I said, I think that's a very good example of what I expect, you know, out of new residential neighborhoods.
Okay. So we're good to go on this one? Maybe there should be a further conversation later about adding that into our annexation process?
I don't think you're gonna, you should come up with a, a formalized formula, because each development is gonna be different. I mean, it's your 300 homes as opposed to 20.
Right. And it also depends too, if the development is beside a park, like we're looking at Brook Meadow Town Homes, it's beside Penworth.
Yeah, this one, like I said, it just has that unique setting where it's far...
And I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
And it'll be on at the end of the month then for the, uh, vote on the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we need to have a discussion of the reallocation of summer camp funds from the Robert W. Johnson Community Center. Uh, so many of you heard about two weeks ago, the board of the Robert W. Johnson Center canceled camp. Uh, we had already agreed to give them $15,000. So within a couple hours, a group of people, uh, came together to figure out how to make summer camp happen for those 50 kids. Um, after about 72 hours of chaos, I think Tekeisha would agree, of phone calls and, and meetings and back and forth emails and discussions, the YMCA graciously offered, um, to take the camp under their license. Uh, they hired the camp coordinators that were going to Rob, the Robert W. Johnson Center's camp, and all 50 kids are in camp. And loving life.
And they named it the Wheaton Park Community Camp. That way, that it's not a YMCA camp, it's still the community camp and the kids, you know.
So it's happening?
It's happening in Wheaton Park, and they're using Summons Community Center.
Okay.
The Hagerstown Housing Authority graciously donated that. Maria YMCA was working on a Saturday, getting everything done, and I know she asked for no credit, but when people go out of the way of their job description to make sure our kids are taken care of, I think that deserves credit.
I think that everyone that got, that did that in that 72 hours deserves the credit, so.
They had a call on the 4th of July
Yes.
To make sure the licenses and stuff were taken care of.
So the request is to transfer the $15,000 to the YMCA to pay the camp counselors with.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have the IAFF Local 1605 Labor Contract.
Hello again.
Hello.
My chief.
All right, so the city negotiating team has reached a tentative agreement, pending your approval later on this evening with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1605. The collective bargaining agreement was voted on and ratified by the union membership on July 6th. If the mayor and council find the tentative agreement acceptable, it'll be scheduled for the formal vote later on tonight. I do recommend you approve and adopt the collective bargaining agreement. Um, I've provided you a copy of the spreadsheet that we use, that is the pay scale. The ultimate cost of the wage enhancements to the general fund is $484,813. If approved tonight, the pay change will, um, the new contracted pay change rate will be effective last Monday, uh, July 11th. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Hmm?
Yesterday.
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 Yeah, yesterday. Sorry.
Hey, I want this month to be over.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this, appreciate you guys. All right, approval, approval of the program year 2022 for CVBG Annual Action Plan.
Well, hi, Aniston.
Hi. How are you?
Doing well.
Good.
Hi, Joe. Joe.
Hi. Good afternoon, and I, I'd like to introduce Aniston Crean, who is our planning and outreach coordinator, who joined our team in June. And, uh, she's gonna kick us off with a quick overview of the CVBG program.
So the city of Hagerstown is an entitlement community for the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is a program that's funded by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. On average, for the past eight years, the city has received approximately $722,000 annually in an entitlement grant. Entitlement awards have ranged from $641,000 to $835,000. On May 17th, the city was notified that our program year 22 and city fiscal year 23 grant amount was $783,642. Uh, the mayor and city council approval of an annual action plan is required to receive the funding amount, and our department needs to submit the approved annual action plan by July 16th. Public input was a part of the process in the creation of the annual action plan. Uh, the first public hearing took place on December 2nd, followed by an open process to receive the public service applications by January of this year. A second public hearing took place on May 9th, and the annual action plan was on display for a comment period between the dates of April 29th and May 30th.
And to give you a little more details on the, this year's annual action plan, uh, the plan is consistent with the CVBG national objectives and our Hagerstown five-year CVBG consolidated plan. The plan supports a number of programs, neighborhood-based projects and programs, funding, uh, grants and loan programs for home repairs for income-qualified homeowners. These programs are administered by DCED. It also provides funding to programs by community partners through sub-recipient agreements, and provides funding for public facility projects. Uh, the action plan is a guide, and we can amend the activities and funding levels with plan amendments throughout the year. The projects and activities for the forthcoming, uh, fiscal year for the annual action plan are included in your packet, and we also included a summary listing of public service funding levels. A couple of highlights about the plan, it's generally consistent, very similar to last year's annual action plan. The levels of funding for the public services are very similar to last year as well. We're continuing to fund the home repair program. Uh, we're, we have also identified public facility projects that are, uh, sidewalk accessibility ramp construction, which is common each year, Wheaton Park enhancements, and also the Alms House rehabilitation project. We are scheduled to have a work session, discussion on this next week on the 19th, to go into more detail about that project. It's recommended that we adopt an annual action plan as it was presented during the public hearings, and then amend it later if there's, uh, different directions specifically on the Alms House activity. Uh, we also are continuing the micro enterprise grant program, this was first introduced in last year's annual action plan. Uh, it was started with 75,000 in funding and amended to add 10,000. It, it supported 17 businesses with grants of $5,000 each, uh, and is included this year to be refunded for an additional 75,000, which would support an additional 15 businesses. Some changes in the document from the public hearing to where we are today is that HUD was late in announcing the enti, entitlements for this year. So we ran the public hearing notices based on an estimated entitlement amount of 825,000. The actual entitlement came in lower, and the difference of 41,358 was reduced from the Alms House project. Uh, the public hearing notice identified that this project would be reduced if the entitlement came in lower than the estimate, so that we administered as we publicized in the public hearing. And then the public service cap was recalculated based on us receiving the lower amount, with a slight adjustment needed to the public service funding, adjusted lower to, by 4,000, and then an equivalent increase to the Alms House project by 4,000 to make sure that that balanced. We included in your packet the motion and the resolution for the special session approval this evening. Um, the approval will allow us to meet the July 16th submission deadline, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have about this annual action plan.
Do you guys have any questions? Good with her?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have the community liaison coordinator position, Chief Kifer.
I had a possible exposure last Friday, so that's why I'm wearing my mask today at work. I'm not sick, but just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, so probably almost a year ago, we sat in this very council chambers with the mayor and city administrator, and pretty much everyone sitting behind me back here in this room, and talked about the issues that our community suffers from, like every other community. Uh, all the social issues, homelessness, drug addiction, youth violence, all those things. And out of that meeting, uh, it was determined that the city should do something more, and step up and be a little more active and proactive in the approach, instead of just waiting for the nonprofits and the other social service agencies to do things. So out of that meeting, the administrator, uh, mayor and I had had a conversation, and it was determined to create a position right now, a community liaison position. So about a month ago, city administrator asked me to draft up a job description, which should be in your packet, describing what the duties and responsibilities would be for that, that employee. And long and short of it, it's to help develop a strategic plan, community strategic plan, that works with all these social service agencies and nonprofits to better coordinate our efforts as a community to address all those issues. Right now, there's a lot of, uh, individualized good services that this community provides, and all these, all these people behind me own that. And I, I believe, and we all talked in other meetings where we sat in, that we believe that we can do it better, uh, as a group. So I think this is a, a good start for the city to lead the way, instead of always just being part of it, but to actually help lead that way. So we can apply for grants that probably would be able to get to help our partners and our community stakeholders that they couldn't get by themselves. So this is the, uh, the beginning of an outreach program, up in our outreach division of the city, I believe that ultimately, we should be working towards, uh, enlarging, but I think this is a good start. Any questions?
No.
No.
It's amazing, great idea.
Great, great idea.
Yeah, much needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we gonna get that posted this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Is that gonna be online?
Yes. Posted tomorrow, awesome. All right, so up next, we're gonna have a community discussion with the social agencies that are represented in the community, or, or in the room this evening. Um, so I know that there are a lot of different organizations here. So if, we could just start by going around, if you are with an agency that deals with subs issues, mental health, or homeless issues, um, if you could identify yourself and what organization you're with, that way we just, we know who's in the room, so. Okay.
Hello, everyone, Stephen Youngblood, Washington County Department of Social Services Deputy Assistant Director for Services. So that covers foster care, CPS, and family preservation, and our family center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brooke Grossman, Chief Mission Officer at Horizon Goodwill, and the chair of the local homes coalition.
Hi, I'm James Grossman, I am a reentry...
I am, uh, reentering that area for the Department of Labor.
My name's Joe Sackett. I'm with the Department of Social Services, specifically, uh, the DAD's Connection, which is a community-based, uh, program where we work with, uh, fathers in terms of employment and hiring. There's a supportive type of agency.
Hi, my name is Cindy Messersmith, and I'm the Homeless Outreach Director at Shepherd Pratt here in Hagerstown, and we work with all of the above that were mentioned daily.
Hi, I'm Terry Conrad with Bester Community of Hope. Um, I work in family support.
I'm Dr. Mark Sewell with the Community Action Council, and we're the continuum of care lead for the county.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Asbury, the Executive Director at Reach of Washington County.
Hi, I'm Vicki Sterling, Director of Behavioral Health, Washington County Health Department, and the local addiction authority.
I'm, uh, Phil Scolaro, the Director of Organization Development and Fatoma Case Management Services. Uh, we have a, the permanent supportive housing program, and we do community-based case management programs.
Hi, I'm Jessica Travato with the Washington County Free Library Downtown Branch, Shaw Fletcher.
And Jason Summers, Outreach Pastor at Lifehouse Church, and also a member of the Homeless Coalition.
I'm Jenny Fleming. I'm the Director of Habitat for Humanity.
Kelly Tencer, Director of Community Impacts and Investment with United Way of Washington County.
Jennifer Collier, I am here with, for Gatekeepers, and I'm a board member for Last and Change.
We know him.
He's writing down everything you're saying.
You guys can introduce yourselves.
Yeah, make sure Marvin.
Do you guys wanna introduce yourselves?
We can.
Okay.
I'm Jeremy Longerbeam. I'm the store manager at Sheets on Doyle Highway.
My name is Beth Towns, and I'm the District Manager for Sheets in the area.
And my name is Stephanie Coral, and I'm a Loss Investigation Manager.
Is she?
With Sheets, sorry.
I'm Marvin Lor, and I have property downtown, and having quite a bit of problems with, um, the homeless.
I, I would also just like to acknowledge Delegate Jam, who's here with us today. Thank you for joining us. So, the intent of this is, obviously, we're not gonna solve all of the issues here, uh, today, but we know that our community, like many others, is facing a lot of issues, whether it be with substance use, or mental health, uh, with homelessness, and a lot of times we struggle with, where do we send people to? What do we do if someone is in crisis? What do we do if we see someone, uh, that looks like they may need services? And as you can tell, we have a lot of organizations who are working to help better our community. Uh, but sometimes, we can all kind of operate in our own little silos. So, I would just like to kind of establish, you know, who's doing what, and what the city can do, what role we can play to help, uh, make sure that everyone's, uh, on the same page. So, um, I think the first subject we should probably discuss is, is mental health. Um, you know, yesterday, I was driving, and I saw someone who was in clear crisis, and, um, up on Wilson Boulevard, and, and was, um, just having, looked like kind of a meltdown on the side of the street. Now, I have Mobile Crisis number in my cellphone, so I was able to call Mobile Crisis, who was able to go out and assist him. But a lot of community members don't know what to do or who to call. So, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how we as a community, and like I said, how that, what role the city can play, and also what needs that we have here for someone, if, if we're gonna talk specifically about mental health. You know, what are we missing in this community? What do we need, and what gaps can we fill? So, that's kind of like how I would like to start this, um, and see, from the providers, what you think our gaps are, and how the community can help fill those gaps, or what the city can do to help fill those gaps.
So, from what I understand, is the community crisis response does have funding for 24 hours, seven days a week, but they're having a, they're having a really hard time filling those positions, but that is much needed. We need it around the clock, just not a nine to five.
Yeah. I think one of the biggest needs in this community overall is 24-hour access to crisis, and a, a walk-in center would be ideal. Um, Vicki, what are we calling it now? Not a crisis center.
Intervention hub.
An intervention hub, yes. If, if there was a place that, um, you know, EMS could transport people who need services, whether that's mental health, substance use, um, whatever other issues we're facing, and we don't have that. But I agree, Mobile Crisis is ideal. If the funding's there, how can we fill the positions? Vicki?
Um, you know, the state is planning on, and they are working on a walk-in center. I think an RFP has been put out, and that a couple providers are looking into, but I think somewhere, just in general, we need somewhere that even can get them to wherever this stabilization center's gonna be, because it hasn't been really earmarked, if it's gonna be regional, if it's gonna be local, if it's supposed to be in the western region, is that me and Frederick, Washington County, Allegheny, Garrett, they're still not sure. Um, but we are slated to get one. Now, what that looks like, I don't think a lot of people still know, but I think the immediate answer is a place where all the agencies can work together in one space, instead of me having to call Brooke and my people, and have to pay for, you know, have staff miss out. I mean, today, they missed outreach because they had to go to CAC to get a copy of the license, and they had to stand in line. Then they went to Brooks, then we had to get her a cab to take her to her three o'clock appointment, and then a cab back to, you know, if we have one area where we could all meet together and get her, get the person's needs met, it would be so much easier.
How do we get this phone number? How do we promote this phone number for, uh, I don't know the phone number for Mobile Crisis. I know it's only nine to five, but how do we, as a community, don't call? What did you say?
Well, you really shouldn't, but there's no after four o'clock. They don't have it staffed. We are about to get a funding for 24 hours, but there isn't staff. So, if you call after four, four-thirty, no one's gonna be able to answer the phone, because that, that three to 11 person that we had isn't there, and they haven't been able to fill it. I mean, that, that's one of the biggest things.
But the number isn't going to change, right?
Nobody's gonna answer the call, so you have to call police.
But shouldn't we train our community to call the number that will eventually be staffed?
Technically, CIT should be dispatched by the, the police.
Can I just call the police?
Nine-one-one. But we can call, because we know people, we can call Lucy and say, because she's the mayor. We can call Lucy and say, we have a crisis. I mean, yeah, when we have that, like, I could call, but technically.
That's the problem.
The CIT model, the CIT model is that you have to call nine-one-one and ask for crisis to be dispatched.
Crisis is dispatched, is that a rule?
Yes.
And, and so the city, we do have a half a million dollars set aside for a, a crisis center, or a care hub, an intervention hub, I'm gonna write that down so I start saying it right, an intervention hub. It's just finding the community partners that wanna partner, and that's who are all on the same page. Because calling nine-one-one, I get that that's how they're dispatched, but also that's a drain on our police resources, when these aren't criminal issues the large majority of the time.
So, a lot of my issues, should I be saying that we need crisis instead of the police? A lot of my overdoses and, that we deal with?
If they're, if they're avail, Vicki, I'm gonna defer to you on that one.
If they overdose, we wanna get called, because we need to show up with medical help, but if it's someone just having a mental crisis, you can see that they're, they're, mentally, you can see that they're, they're, they need some, some help, they're not in an emergency. When you call dispatch, you just ask for a crisis center, and they, they can dispatch them.
That's going between eight and three, right? That you ask?
Yeah. Saturday. It's a. I think, we at Shepherd Pratt have the funding to do this, we're just not able to hire the people to do it. That, we have funding, we just had a meeting about it, and we just don't have anybody that's interested in getting hired to do it. It's gonna be a tough position to fill, especially 24, but they're on it, they're doing the best they can. And even myself, if I'm out in the community, I'm supposed to call the police before I call them, but I can get away with it. Because normally, they react as if, that there's a issue that requires something more than just police. You can't always handle a crisis person by yourself, no matter who you are.
Yeah.
But they are working on it.
And just so our community knows, if there is someone who has mental health issues or, um, and they don't wanna participate in a program, there's nothing anyone can do to force them, correct?
That's right.
And I know the answer is yes, but I, I need the community to understand that. Unless someone is willing to engage in services and get help, we can't force them into a, a program or into a treatment facility.
Unless they're a danger to themselves or others.
Correct.
But that's just a, but, so, I, just will say a couple of things, right? And, and I'll, I'll speak only for myself, but I think others on this side of the room might feel this a little bit. We are drowning in need, right? We are working with our same annual budgets, but being asked to serve far greater than we have before. You guys are in the same position. You know, we have staff that are working 48, 50 hours a week because of those calls we get when somebody's in the middle of Wilson Boulevard, and we have to scurry them back home or whatever, right? And so, we need to be able to increase the feet on the street, honestly, of human service workers. It doesn't even have to be licensed social workers, I don't think, but to do what we need to do every day with Kristen to get her to move to where she needs to be, or those kinds of things, that requires constant, constant relationship building, right? I mean, you guys have been with her for years, Cindy's been with her for years, for, so for so many of those people, us only being able to go out on a Thursday night, because then that's when we have enough money to pay overtime, or, or that kind of thing, isn't meeting the need, right? We have to be able to go consistently, but to be able to do that, we have to be able to pay people. And currently, our current resources are strapped, and that's just reality for us.
Well, but Shepherd Pratt has, has funding available to hire somebody, right? But you can't hire anybody. Why?
Nobody applies.
Why can't you, is the question?
But I don't know if this is a Shepherd Pratt.
Nobody applies.
Nobody applies? Is, do they not apply because of the, the salary? Do they not? I mean, you know.
Salary's been up a little bit, so, yeah.
I, so I can say, we're, we're experiencing the same thing at the local Department of Social Services, right? We need the state to get with, they're paying people more money. Um, for instance, we have a multi-systemic therapy program where if a young person in the home under 18 is at risk of being out of home place in foster care or shelter, it's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week response that are available for when the kid goes into crisis, or the family goes into crisis. What we found this year, when we're time, time to do the budget, is they again tried to give us the same amount of money. Frederick is paying about $12,000 more for that same position. They can't fill it. We haven't been able to fill it for a year. So, we've got the ask in, and of course, that's a state-level issue, but I still say, I know the social workers in Frederick and down in Baltimore make a lot more money than the human services workers do in Washington County, and they're starting to travel that way, or not come this way, because it's significantly a lot less money. So, I think, I encourage even to look at the budgets, to see what we're gonna be offering people to actually do this. And a crisis worker has to be specifically trained to respond to crisis, so it's not just about hiring a social worker because they want to grad score their license. They have to actually be trained in that modality to actually know what to do when they respond, and that's another huge barrier.
You can also make a lot of money in the warehouses and stuff around here that you can, the social services work.
So, I'll just say, we are not having problems filling our positions, and that's a problem we don't have, but part of what we have looked at, and maybe this is something the department should consider, or others, is we've looked at people with lived experience and said, they're the best people to be out on the street engaging with people, and we're not going to pay them only $13 an hour because they don't have a degree, right? They're making the same wage that our degree human service worker is. And so, when I'm talking about feet on the street, it's not necessarily crisis work, it's the feet on the street to build those relationships and the trust, so that someone will engage in mental health services, or so then, when we bring Alicia or somebody else down, that person says, I trust them, I'm willing to have this conversation, because we can't just walk up to somebody and say, hey, would you like to go to rehab today? That's not reality, right? And so, that's the group, I think, that we need to target and have a fleet of that can be available seven days of the week, because they will have the best rate of success. And, you know, we have opportunity to train community health workers, we have some entities that are willing to pony up the money for that, so to me, that's where we should go. Sorry.
So, who takes the lead on that? Cause I, I agree, we need, uh, we need a street team all the time, and, I mean, we know where people are, we know where, you know, find people, Vicki.
See, I was just gonna say, see, and our problem is, and Steve's problem is, we're state agencies, so we cap, so if you're a peer support specialist, one, you're 15, 50 an hour, so you can go to Sheets. Then I hold the grants for the crisis, so does, um, Mental Health Authority, so they're at the same funding stream, so they're capped at what they can pay. I mean, granted, we did get them extra money this year, and really fought for an increase because they were level-funded, but that's where we are. You guys are great, because you have that ability. We, there's no, uh, no, I, no, 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 I'm saying, but I'm saying, like, if you look at, like, why nobody'll, you know, apply, or, you know, no one, um, is hired, we've had a coordinator or special programs to run crisis services for two years, and I can't get anybody in that position.
So, is there another agency that can partner with you, and partner with other organizations to take the lead on that, or to fill those positions?
So, I think we, we've, I know I've identified part of the problem in my mind. Coming up in August, and I can't remember, I know Chief Kifer's invited, Judge Wright is putting together a group of people, and we're bringing in a lady by the name of Sarah Hemminger from Baltimore City. I worked with her while I was there in my career in Baltimore City, and she created this, and I encourage everybody to Google it, it's called Thread. She developed a mentoring program for young people. She was, brief history, she was a biomechanical engineer student at Hopkins. She got tired of driving to the city every day and seeing kids not in school, hanging out on the street. She decided to do something about it. That's her full-time job now. She's heavily funded, they have, like you're saying, outreach. Each youth that's identified has what they call a family, and that family, somebody's available to that kid in that family 24 hours a day, seven days a week. She's coming in August. I encourage people that'll, that really wanna make this move forward to come, ask Judge Wright to add you to the invite to come, to hear this lady speak, and how she actually got it off the ground and running, because I think it's almost impossible, in my mind, to think that we're gonna be able to continuously fund a group of people every single day to be outraged. It's gonna have to be more of like a mentoring program, mentorship, where people really wanna see change in the community, and they just grab onto this idea. Now, her family's, her mentorship program is funded now, because she's got the backing of the Abel Foundation, but she can show us how to get off the ground and get this going. Cause I could tell you, I do a lot of volunteer work outreach in our unaccompanied homeless youth population, and it's terrifying, because what's going on, I think that we're turning, we're not turning a blind eye to, that we may not be really open to, is that the fentanyl pills are costing them $6. Anybody can do it, it allows them to escape for three, four hours a day. We gotta get them before they start that, because once they start that, we're, it's almost impossible, and that's what's going on right now.
Isn't fentanyl illegal?
Huh?
Isn't fentanyl illegal?
Fentanyl's illegal, but they're getting the, the pills are coming up from Baltimore. It used to be, you know, $10, $15, $20 a pill, but they figured out, if they lowered it to six, they can sell more. It's a, fentanyl lasts a lot short, the, the high's a lot shorter than heroin, so every two or three hours, they gotta go get it again and get it again, so they can do a $6 pill, panhandle, steal, whatever they gotta do, cause they know they're gonna be jonesing in another two or three hours, panhandle six bucks, go get another pill. Good, and that's what, that's what scares me about the city, is our, we have a huge unaccompanied homeless youth problem, and we got a fentanyl problem, and they're, they know, and you could ask, ask, I mean, once you develop a relationship, why do you do it? It allows me to escape, I don't have to think about anything. And that's a scary proposition that we, we gotta really try to get a handle on.
Yeah.
As a landlord, I'm thinking here, there's a lot of groups that should be coordinating amongst themselves, and I, I don't know how you get one person to lead, but you need to do that. And so much of the, uh, the homeless are just strictly drugs and alcohol, or both, and I'm, I'm picking up whiskey bottles, beer cans on my property all the time. There's a liquor store nearby. I know one time, um, East Detroit, I was up there, and they would not sell the miniatures, and the reason being, because of the alcohol, uh, alcoholics would buy those.
So, we do have a homeless coalition, that the organizations meet and come up with a plan. I just would like to know what more of a role the city can play, and I know we started out talking about mental health, but I definitely do wanna talk about homelessness specifically too, but Phil, go ahead.
So, um, like, obviously, these things all converge, right?
So, like, obviously, these things all converge, right? So we partner with the case management for the law enforcement assist diversion program that the county has. The city police are, are trained in the referral process, the county sheriff's department is. So I want to hear stories about individuals at risk for potentially a necessary police contact because of trespassing or, you know, public intoxication or leaving, you know, their property around other people's private property. Or I hear about overdoses that require police attention. We're not seeing the referrals into this program that we would expect to from the volume that you hear the community describing, right? And there's two full-time case management positions for this. There's peer services that are provided by the health department. And a lot of this stuff, these don't have like authorization periods that end in six months. These people can work with this for years, and some of them do. And, you know, they get it stable enough to return to family where they had natural supports. They get stable enough to maintain employment and start paying for things we originally helped with. But we need to get the calls. And again, it's the, it's problematic with the hours and there's not much going on after five o'clock if we get a call. So some people are taken to the sheriff's department and places like that and held until the morning. Or sometimes we're given contact information for an individual who wasn't arrested but needs help. But community members do not need police to make the referrals either. There's social referrals now. They're very minor. There, it's not like a lot of paperwork. They don't have requirements with income. They don't have requirements with a diagnosis, a type of insurance, nothing. They're at risk for police contact and then a team reviews their eligibility. It's a very low barrier.
And so they contact Potomac Case Management?
So they could contact any of the entities.
Yeah, I think it's directly, well, it's directly our office at the, at my office because then it'll be taken care of, David or I. That's the natural line because it's on twenty-four seven and it goes to the answering service, so we could make contact that night. But we literally, we haven't gotten a law enforcement referral in. Months.
A year.
Maybe a year.
Do they know about it?
They've been trained in it.
Yeah, they've been trained. And we just attended, like, in January, I went to every roll call and spoke to them and gave them information. So, yeah. And, and the other thing that's kind of nice about it, we have a lot of funding. I mean, like, a lot of funding that, that we've paid for hotels, we've paid to have houses cleaned up.
There's not a big bureaucratic process to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you can prove that you've fronted the things that haven't worked, the money can move quickly, the same day usually.
What? So the number is two, four, oh, three, one, three, 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 one, zero. And just say you want to make a lead referral. We have it right up there on the window. They know what to do.
I have a question about that. It's so lead, is, if you make a referral, does, and it's a, it's somebody in crisis, does lead only meet a specific time? Because I, I kind of think that, in my mind, we had a guy at, at the house and made a referral to lead, and then it was like, but lead doesn't meet until July fourteenth.
Oh.
Okay, somebody may have been asking, I'm sorry, somebody may have been asking questions that did not clearly state eligibility requirements, right? Like, maybe they're saying, well, this person's in need. We were trying to determine whether or not they're actually at risk for unnecessary police contact for the reason of really pervasive homelessness. That was me maybe making them vulnerable for things like trespassing charges. Or the, it will say things like poverty, homelessness, and then like substance use. But not all those things necessarily imply police contact, right? There's usually like additional vulnerability that causes the contact. So there is a review meeting twice a month. There's administrative meeting and, twice a month? No, that's, that's monthly. And then twice a month, there's an operational work group meeting. That's basically every other week where the entire team, direct care workers who work with the clients and the administrative team, representatives from Potomac Case Management, Shepard Pratt, the health department, and the city police, and the county sheriff's department, all meet. And then they can review more complicated things where eligibility is not clear or a single entity did not feel that they could make the call on their own. If something's urgent because they need someone to go out, we don't have to wait until that meeting.
Yeah, we usually, usually screens, people break down in there and talk to the team.
Yeah, so I guess I'd have to know specifically what occurred. Sometimes there's no contact information for the individual either. I mean, it's very common.
So I guess a major question that sounds like, right, is if you know someone who needs services, know someone who's in crisis, like you just said, or what, who, who does the community contact?
The health department.
The health department.
That's our number.
So, yeah, I think we need to get that message out.
Sure.
For sure.
So we have a peer of the day, and we always have a manager of the day. So we're set up that if anybody calls or comes in, they have someone to talk to and they can be linked to services. So that's not that uncommon for that to happen.
All right, so discussing homelessness specifically, because I think this has been, you know, something that we're hearing about. I'm sorry. It's something that we're hearing about, you know, consistently is we're, we're seeing a lot of perceived homeless in our community, whether it be on the benches on the square and our parks, other places. And every day at seven AM, you can see people walking with all of their belongings. And we know it's hard to be homeless, their needs aren't being met, and now they're carrying all their things with them and have no place to go. So what is, what can we do as a community to help solve this? You know, we don't have a twenty-four hour shelter. We see people in the library all the time and other public locations.
At, you know, at sheets and other businesses, right?
So what, what role does the city need to play to help connect these services together? Or, or what role can you guys play? Because we're missing the boat somewhere. It's very clear here.
Disconnected.
It's disconnected, right? And so we have places that have shelter space. We have organizations offering services, but yet we still have a large amount of people on our streets every day. Where's the disconnect?
I think it's, oftentimes it's just ignorance of not knowing what to do. Like, we, we started a disconnected homeless youth advisory group, Peace, Potomac Case Management, Goodwill, United Way, a bunch of service providers. Because what we found is somebody walks into the department and they're homeless. Well, we don't do homeless services. So oftentimes they would be, well, you're at the wrong place, go here. And then they would go there and then go here. And people just don't do that, right? So we need, I think maybe it's headed by the mayor's office, like all of us, all of the agencies, private and governmental, sit down and say, let's come up with what each agency does, how we handle situations when somebody walks through the door.
Yes.
So they're not turned away or they're just not told, go here or go there.
That's, that's a job I would gladly take, which is why I wanted to do this today. I mean, and why we're hiring that outreach coordinator position. That's like, the goal of that person is to take the lead on, on that. But.
But I think we can't be, I can't, I think we can't be ignorant to the fact that it's very difficult for an individual that is just told, go here, and then go there, and then go there. It's almost impossible. It's, it's literally almost impossible to have like all the services all over the county, all over the city. So not only the mobile.
Give you an example real quick. Last night, I took a young man that was unaccompanied, right? Worked with Goodwill now, he's once, he's got a place, he's doing well. When I was dropping off another eighteen-year-old and twenty-year-old unaccompanied homeless, he was overdosing right in front of the daddy mom, right? Had to call the ambulance for him, he's fine, they got it. But we also have to recognize, we're pretty much a nine-to-five county, eight-to-five county. Anything happens after that, it's, you know, by the grace of God, good people that I, like, it was Brooke's employee Ashley that I called that responded to the scene, helped, it's the girlfriend who was unaccompanied, get to the hospital, make sure she was taken care of. Because she don't get paid for that.
That's right.
But she does. Well, well, I mean, but.
Don't say that.
There are people though that just answer the phone and just answer the call, aren't, aren't really get paid to do that. So I think that the other recognition is if anything happens after five o'clock, it's, you're pretty much on your own until the next morning.
So it is very glaringly obvious that we need a twenty-four hour intervention center.
I agree.
Which we've known for how many years now?
I think the other thing to understand beyond what each organization, I can say it louder if you need me to. The other thing to understand beyond what each organization does or what each shelter program does or whatever is the criteria to receive those services, right? Because when you talk about, we have a this shelter or that shelter, we have to keep in mind that there may be shelters that require a background check before someone can go stay there, or there are shelters that require a drug screen. So there, there are barriers to that. So even just knowing that this shelter serves this population doesn't necessarily help any of you or any of us unless we know those other things. So I think you really have to have that outreach person and a smaller probably network to support them of individuals that are their go-tos that can say, here's where you should go, here's where you should go. Don't, don't send them there because we know that's not going to work, right? We know we don't have a family shelter right now.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Scott.
You're gonna, no, she's gonna say the same thing I am. Go ahead.
If someone is homeless, isn't that enough of a barrier? I mean, for God's sakes. Like, like, why, why? Like, enough red tape? Why is there so much red tape? Like, if someone doesn't have a place to sleep at night, why, why should there be more red tape to get them into what they need?
Or at least.
If I couldn't get into a shelter because she was going to test positive for marijuana.
Exactly.
Not done that yet, I mean.
We're not carrying an ID.
Yeah. We're not carrying an ID.
No, we have an ID, we don't need to know.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think that's, that's, that adds to it in the fact that, is there at least someplace they could go immediately that they don't have, there is no barrier? And then they're at least safe, they're at least in a place where they're off the street.
I mean, I think.
Then they can start getting acts together and that kind of thing.
Would that be the role of an intervention hub?
Would that be the role of an intervention hub?
I think it's the role of the entity that wants to take on that liability, though. I mean, I think that we're, we're talking about somebody just automatically wants to take somebody in. I mean, every one of these organizations, you know, are independent, have that question of liability where you go, wait a second. You know, if there, if, if, you know, what is that liability to me as an entity to the folks that I have in there now? You know? I, I don't, it can't be, well, I mean, it can't be a blank slate either, though. I mean, it can't be that some entity out there simply just takes somebody in because that is, you know, is, is the issue of the moment. And I would, if I was one of those organizations, I'd, I'd want to have some, some checks and balances.
Right?
I don't want to interrupt anybody, but I feel like I could be helpful. Okay, so the thing is, all of these organizations you're looking at do work together. We each have our area of expertise, and we have a homeless coalition that works together. Our homeless prevention program works with CAC's homeless prevention literally every day. We work together. There are shelters in the county and they're all very different. And the reason they're valuable is there's not one way into homelessness and there's not one way out. Reach is the lowest barrier shelter, absolutely, but if you do drugs in the shelter, you'll be barred. There are people that choose to stay outside in the winter, stand on the corner in the sweltering heat instead of coming in. That's free will. So you keep, that's where homeless outreach comes in and you keep chipping away until they agree to come in. Hey, do you want to come in and get some water? Come in and shower. So, but free will. We keep trying, so I'm not saying we just give up. We do have shelters in this county. We have family shelters in this county. They all have different things in place that they believe keep their people safe. For instance, St. John's, they've made some changes. They've hired a phenomenal person to take those calls. They're full and there's now a waiting list. This has happened in the matter of weeks. They believe in a background check for the safety of those children who have already been through trauma. They've lost their home, they're keeping their family together to get back on their feet. They feel strongly if someone has an active criminal history, that they are putting their other clients that are there at risk and they're not safe. The Salvation Army is for women and children. They have a window of time where you leave during the day because they believe that that's how you get, it's a temporary solution. That's why we're not twenty-four. Because if you're comfortable, you're inside, we saw that with a year-round practice. You're inside, you're not doing anything, there's no nudge to move forward. If you have to leave, you're out, you're walking, you're not so comfortable, you will try to go and make connections. But if you're not ready for change, it won't matter. So I just want to share those things. We do have those things, we do work together. We're always, we can improve, we can do better, we want to do better. But some of those things are in place.
I know that, I, I attended a class, a seminar at the National League of Cities in Washington DC, and it had people from all over the country that specialize in homeless, homelessness. And that was what this was on. And every single expert that was in the room was saying, it has to be housing first. You have to house people first. You can't, people aren't going to get the resources they need until they're housed first. So I think that's, as a community, what we need to be looking at too. But again, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, and I appreciate the segue. Again, I'm Dr. Sewell from CAC. So just to kind of help expand on what Jeannie was saying too. We identify people that are homeless. According to, in January, the point in time count, which is a HUD requirement, y'all are familiar with that. We had two hundred and sixteen people identified as homeless. Fifty-six of those individuals were chronically homeless. A lot of reasons for chronically homeless, some mental health, a lot of other issues. Right now, we have what's called a coordinated entry list, okay? Where a lot of the people in this room, they will sit down and evaluate people that are homeless. Youth and adults, and they get a score based on their vulnerability. Then people that have access to that, people that are working with the community and they're multiple agencies. We meet regularly. Today, I lead those meetings. You know, we'll have all the, people are here this morning on these calls. We do Zoom calls now. The goal is to get people housed, right? In March, we had a hundred and forty-six people on the list. Today, we had a hundred and ten people on the list. We, we have funding for what's called rapid rehousing. That takes a person not having any resources at all into a home. Very minimal barriers. They just need to want housing. Some people do not want housing. Some people do want to be on the street. So that's hard to understand, but that's just reality. You know, when, I've been in some tent camps that, they're pretty nice. In the middle of the winter, when it's ten degrees outside, it's hot in the tent camps. It's maybe not be too safe, but it's hot, it's warm. We have a group of people that are rapidly rehousing a lot of folks. We've, we've rapidly rehoused over a hundred people. They're in housing. And then we have a program, it's like with Brooke, who, they are the leaders in workforce development with, with Goodwill. A person does not need to connect to any services to get rapidly rehoused. All right? That's housing first. But if you read the current data and with the struggles with what LA is going through, what San Francisco is going through, they're finding that when they pour these billions of dollars into these units, you've just allowed people to then do what they're already doing. So they need to, we need to break that mentality, we need to break that. And that's what workforce, getting people jobs, getting people, putting those pieces of life back together. That's been, we've, we've seen a lot of good traction with that, especially with our youth. This is what's currently happening right now. Today, we had a bunch of people meeting and were housing. Last week, we housed a couple very chronically homeless people. It was a great success, right? And we, and, but it's going to take a lot of case management. You know, it's going to take, you're going to have to, like Brooke was saying, to be with that person, to build that relationship, to be successful.
But I see for valley, though, some of those very chronically homeless people that we're talking about lived in a year-round shelter for almost a year, right? Doing workforce development and all of those other things because we had an opportunity with, with CAREFAC funding to do that. So we housed them first and then we began to work on other things. That's gone. So we're back to not having that year-round opportunity that we have before. But we did find a great deal of success doing things that way. Bringing them in no matter where they were, right? And then building from there. It doesn't mean that once they were there, if they violated rules or were doing things that weren't appropriate for the setting, that they could stay. But then we could call the health department or lead or somebody and say, we've got to intervene differently with this person. So I, you know, I think, yes, it's exciting that we got them there, but part of it was because we had that resource for the last sixteen months.
Takisha.
I was going to say that, okay, there, there's those that don't want to, to be housed. But then there's those that are losing their hous, their housing rapidly with small children. And a lot of the, the calls and, and things that I get have to do with not being able to get all the things that they need to CAC or to the agency in order to stop the eviction. And so then the eviction still happens, and now you have, they have to go to Goodwill or, you know, to try to get rapid or back to CAC. And so I just, I want to know, how can we work together to kind of stop that before, you know, before the eviction happens? And now you have a, a working mother with small children that is now homeless and can't find anywhere now because now they have an eviction on their court, and now they can't go into a shelter. And now they can't go into a shelter. Um, just a whole lot of things. And those are the, those are the families that I'm dealing with. I understand the families that are the people that are out there that don't want to come in. But I actually just had a landlord that is waiting on, um, a, a certain amount of money from CAC where he has to now evict the person even though they're pledged. He's still, because now he's losing his properties.
Yeah, and the emergency, the ERAP program, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, you know, this is a federal program, money put down to the states. We're, we are the, um, CAC is managing that for the county. We, we've, over 4,000 people we've helped just this year. And we have emergency funding. It goes through the county, it is complicated. Those people, the situation that you're talking about, okay? We, we respond, the, the application is very simplified. The problem comes into this is the lag time of, we'll get to say, well, you've got, you know, 4.9 million coming, 1.3 million dollars coming. And then we wait. And we have all these pledges. And we talk to the landlords and we say, the money is on the way, literally. This is in writing from the county, from the state. You just, we don't have it yet to cut the check. A lot of times, we'll, we'll put all that in high priority. But it's still, it's extremely difficult because of the funding flow. Over 4,000 households we've kept in their homes. Some people, even though we tell them, we, we work with the landlords, some landlords don't want a $9,000 payment, they'd rather evict the people. That's the other side to this. You know, sometimes there are other reasons that people are getting evicted rather than just non-payment. And that's the, the untold story for some of those, you know, families. But we are on tre, we're, we're on track to get close to $6 million out the door in the next couple of months because of the need. And it's still com, it still hasn't stopped.
Delegate, yeah.
So thank you very much for pulling this meeting together. Really, it's very helpful with the list that you sent, Mayor Keller, to kinda show all of the different nonprofits that we have in the area. What I noticed is there's a lot of duplicative services. Uh, there are a lot of services that overlap that do similar work. And I'm wondering if we need to look at just streamlining some of these nonprofits and lumping one or two together that are doing similar work. Because it can, it can be very confusing when you have a, a woman or man or family. And I think you mentioned, the person can spend all day at just two places, going from, yeah, depending on what, what they need. And that can be probably very frustrating for the person. So I think it might be helpful if we look at, I know that's a, that's a, a long stretch, but consolidating some of these nonprofits that do similar duplicative work. Cause it can be very confusing. And, uh, you know, I, I, I love to problem solve and think things through, talk them out as I'm thinking them through. So forgive me for just a moment. So if, if a person goes to CAC or Horizon Goodwill or another service because they're in need of whatever that need is, and they've gotta go here and they've gotta go there because they need food, they gotta go there because they need medical, they have to go here, all of, across the, the city, maybe even establishing some type of virtual meeting. I mean, we've been zooming to death since the pandemic. So maybe if they land at Horizon Goodwill, but they need something at CAC, they don't have to leave Horizon Goodwill and walk over to CAC. Could it be like a, a virtual conversation?
We've already established that at the CAC.
So-
If somebody's at Goodwill right now, for example, we actually have, built our programs. We'll have the medical office there soon, too, and healthcare navigation. We have community healthcare workers, our workers programs.
But is that the norm? Is that the norm across all organizations, not just specific? That's just you? That's just you?
But if someone's at Goodwill, we've had our staff trained in the CAC's process and the rapid rehousing process. So they can start that process, complete it with the person and they call these guys and say, hey, we've completed the application, we're sending it your way. So that is established now.
But that's just your program. I think this gentleman mentioned, the person can spend all day bouncing around the city, going from one place to the next. If we can keep them at one place and just virtually connect with those entities to keep them from spending all day walking if they don't have a car, catching the bus if they don't have a car, we can do some of that work virtually. So God forbid if they have children and they don't have anyone to keep their children while they're trying to handle their business. So I think if we look at all of these nonprofits, set up some type of virtual meeting with, with all of the nonprofit organizations, I think that would be helpful.
I think that goes back to an intervention hub. A one, a one-stop shop, you know, for, for, you go and, and can have whatever needs, you need met that day. You have access to all, all of those services.
And I will say, I met, I, I was working with a constituent, um, gosh, feels like it's been a month, but it's only been a week. Um, she needed some housing care. She was evicted, an elderly lady, 70 years old. She was evicted from her, uh, place where she was living. And we reached out, I worked with a, a lady who I know. We, we called several places. We called CAC, we called, um, Horizon Goodwill. We called many places, some, a couple of the places that I know who rent, people who are landlords. We called many places but weren't able to help this lady get into a place until just yesterday. And it, it was just so many different places to call. You're just sort of shooting an arrow in the dark, hoping to hit a target, hopefully to hear someone say, yes, we can help this lady get a place. So I think it will be helpful if we just, we've gotta consolidate. There are too many arms and extensions that are doing similar work, same work. And if we can consolidate, streamline it, tighten it up, I think that would probably be most effective.
Well, and I think hopefully that's as far as from a city standpoint, the community liaison position that we hire will be able to connect those dots. Um, cause I, I agree with you, that's, it's a lot. I mean, I've been immersed in this world and Takisha has, for six years now. And I still get confused on, okay, who do I call, what do I do? And I feel like I'm very, very well-connected. And so if, if someone who deals in this every day is still confused on what to do, I mean, for the average citizen, how would you know?
And all of us in this room are, it's convenient for us to get services whenever we need it. Everyone here, if we needed something ourselves, it's easy for us because there's, there's a lot of one-stop shops for us. Robinwood, CBS, it's easy for us, we all have transportation. But we're asking our most vulnerable people to go from place to place to place. And I've said it bunches of times about consolidation of services. One place for someone to walk in and be able to get whatever they needed. And I don't know how that looks, got a couple buildings in mind, but-
I mean, we had money, we had money for it.
Right.
I mean, let, let's be honest here. And then some of the players that need to be at the table won't do it because of fear of political pushback. I mean, let's call it what it is, it's the truth. And, and as you can see by this room, it's, it's absolutely what's needed.
Right.
But we could talk about the issues all day, but I, I think I, I just wanna know, where are our gaps, other than clearly 24-hour crisis and intervention? But what other gaps are there? How can, and what role does the city need to play? Cause we hear all the time, the city needs to do something, the city needs to do something. Well, we have access to ARPA money, we have a, a ton of resources who are all doing good work in this community every day, but there's still holes to fill. So how do we fill those holes?
I think you answered it, it's one-stop shop.
Well, and- I was almost like, I've been saying this for six years, hey?
And I think we, we really need to think about our youth because they are lacking in services. We don't have treatment providers for them. There's no really substance use providers for them. Um, it, the adolescent clubhouse, but that really isn't right now. We need to get the kids in there. But there, there isn't a lot of services for our youth at all. And that's, that's, that, the youth are the people that we're seeing 10 years, I mean, like, from now.
And to Steve's point, reaching them before it starts, which, I mean, Washington is purple, that's our whole mission. But it's hard to get into the schools to have those conversations with the kids that need to hear it.
I mean, we, 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 we worried about working. I mean, let's, let's all try to sleep in a tent in the city park where we can get them to work every day. It just doesn't happen.
Right, gotta house people first.
I, I'm just curious, as we discuss the necessity for a one or a singular location, and I see just maybe a dozen of probably 60 organizations out there that provide some form or some portion of services, I'm just curious what that looks like for you. Meaning, let's say, let's say we picked a building and let's say we, we said, this is gonna be the location. But just in this room, there's 12 different organizations that operate out of 12 different buildings that, that, that provide, you know, dozens of different things. Does that mean you're going in there? Or does that mean, uh, an entirely new structure of entity is created there that then filters to you? I'm just curious how that works if there are already dozens of organizations out there operating independently. How would this new singular location function? Would all of you go in there or would this be a new entity that, I don't wanna say duplicates, but, but does what you do individually now?
You're right, we can't consolidate everything everybody does into one place. But what you could have is a centralized intake center. A centralized center where everyone's intake staff were present at the same place that could evaluate the person. Cause everybody's, like I talked about before, everybody's guidelines to access treatment or service at their particular location is gonna be different, right? But if one person, if Shelley comes to this place and this place can evaluate her and say, she checks box A, B, C, and D for organization, A, B, C, and D who are present, right? And we can do their intake here, but not E, F, and G, that can start at that place. Then she can be path to the place that is most appropriate for her to receive her services. Does that make sense?
It, it does, as you're saying it. But I'm the person standing there going, okay, I'm here today, I'm at this place they told me to go. You're evaluating me, let's say you're evaluating my family, what's the duration from getting from this centralized place to point B? And what's the permanency of point B? Because I'm, I guess I'm just thinking of it in terms of a practical and, and realistic terms that I go there and does that mean I get somewhere, you know, somewhere else, um, uh, in that fashion? And then that begs the question, you know, not as, as someone, you know, being a patron of that location, but rather sitting at this table of, what does that look like? Cause I hear people talk about it's gonna be the size of the old county market or, or the, you know, the, the size of the Western Maryland Hospital. And, and what, I guess what I'm trying to, to hear, though, is what's the size of this place? You know what I mean?
We looked at one floor of, of the aspiring to serve-
That's what I'm trying to figure out, is what, what type of place or size of place you're talking about.
If that one floor had staff from each organization, right? You would have to, each organization that chose to participate would have to create a position that would be based there, right? That is their workspace for that organization. And they are serving as the gateway to that particular organization through that process. Does that, I understand your question, but I'm saying, we don't have it now, so we wouldn't know exactly how it would work. But that's how I would envision it. And then if that person was screened to be most appropriate for the recovery house at Goodwill and workforce development services, then you would deploy those staff to that location to meet that person as well, right?
So you wouldn't really need a person from every organization that would somehow get picked to be a participant in this process. You just need a couple of folks that-
Right, you could have people that were trying to draw on the organization.
Have that liaison capability to each one of those.
Right, that just know how to access resources and where to send people and, and help them.
Like I said, the, the centralized thing sounds good as we discuss it. I'm just trying to, uh, uh, you know, visualize the practical application of it in my mind of how and what duration that would occur.
We can't do that.
So, as, Jim, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, so I'm a renter, I'm renting through the state of Maryland from Western Maryland. So what I do, I go to the prisons and I introduce to the people who are gonna be getting released all the resources and stuff that are in this community or the community that they're going out to get released to. So the navigators inside the prison can keep contact with them when they leave. So when, once they leave, they can contact me. So they have my information as well. And I work as almost that one-stop just by myself here in, like, Long Island County. They come to me, I find out what their need is, you know, it's that assessment. And then you put the plan together and then you take them to each individual resource. And I, and I'll do that, too. Like, I'll drive them over there or I'll call the person or call the organization, we'll do the application, do everything there. But it's being knowledgeable of all the other resources in the community to be able to do that. But it doesn't always necessarily take a lot of people to do that.
Victoria.
Oh, I was just gonna say, when we talk about size and what it'll look like, I think we need to remember that our plan for a crisis center is dead. We're not gonna have medically assisted treatment, they're not gonna be able to access that, they're not gonna be able to access medical care. In an ideal world, it should be a place where they can go and start MAT, they can have a wound looked at, that they can see up here, that they can go somewhere. That's not going to happen, like Emily said. So what we need to do is figure out, how do we meet the needs of the people in our community and be in one central place? Like today, I could've called Brooke, Brooke could've, could've sent somebody down to see this girl. Now ideally, I would've liked to have had ideal options there so we could start her on that and she could go to the Salvation Army tonight instead of doing all that with a four-year-old on her hip and all her belongings. So not, not the most ideal situation. So I think looking at it from what we can do, while it's not ideal, at least we have one central place where we don't have a person with all their belongings, three or four bags, maybe a four-year-old, going all over the city trying to figure out how to navigate it. We literally, I'm not going to lie, she called my worker at least 10 times and said, I'm done, I'm not going. And I don't blame her.
Yep.
I do not blame her. The kid was hungry, she was tired, and she was in withdrawal. She went to Salvation Army, by the grace of God, and she made her ideal options appointment and we made it through the day. But she wanted to give up every step of the way. And I don't, I would, too.
Yeah.
I would, too.
Yeah.
Vicky, why you have that microphone? I got a question. Now, you had said earlier, and you sir, too, that you haven't gotten a police referral in, in like months or something like that? Now, what would that entail if you did? I mean, help me understand.
So we are so low barrier right now that I've taken, um, referrals from Facebook Messenger when someone called me and said, I think I have a leave referral. I said, I'll send someone there right now. That's, that's literally-
So why do you think you haven't gotten any referrals?
I think because there- You're, I was just gonna say, I think it's just community changes, staffing issues. It, it just, I don't, I don't think, I mean, you can-
Our guys are so young, they're just trying to learn the job.
Yeah.
It's like you're still learning to remember to do and a lot of that.
So, so walk me through this, okay? Help me out.
And they don't, and on-
When, when Sheetz calls 911 and they have somebody in crisis, uh, overdose or whatever, I know you go, HFD goes, CRS finally shows up at some point, chase car. Is, is that the kind of referral that you would then hopefully get from HPD or?
It would probably be more like, one of, what we have gotten from Sheetz is stealing. Like officers have called, you know, they, this person keeps going in stealing food, can you just come and complete with them? And so we, we did that.
Do they go on the Tuesday, like?
It depends on if there's a, um, an overdose there.
If I have a- Well, that's what I meant, if there was an overdose, maybe we'd be on the Tuesday. On Tuesday nights, there's a, a group that go out and visit. The list of people in the area.
I'm sorry, we don't, as you say, we don't go to actual locations, we go to people's house. We've done an outreach last summer, we were at a pharmacy across the street, but we really didn't see that many people. You know, we walked around the neighborhood and stopped, we've definitely not there before.
But just so you all understand, if someone goes to Meredith on an overdose, they're already not, you could hear support recovery specialists aside, right? Or, or with their, right?
Yeah.
So if somebody goes from an overdose to the emergency room, we hear support recovery staff.
If they go to the emergency room.
If they go to-
If they decide not to be treated, then they just walk away and that's part of the problem.
There, they, they, I mean, so there's nothing at night. And you're right, your, our transport rate is horrible.
Yeah. If they go all the way there, then they leave, change their mind.
And, right, right, change, change your mind, walk down the street, overdose or something else. And then we're back out again, same group, yeah.
So we have the Director of Behavioral Health saying, this is what our community needs. Unfortunately, the plan is dead because of community input and, and pressure. But we know that's what we need. We have a roomful providers who are pretty much all agreeing that we need the same thing. I, I'm tired of hearing, we can't do it because of political pressure, we just need to do it. I mean, we're doing a disservice to our community by not, by not having the resources that are needed. I, I think we need to talk about next steps, I mean, I, go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to make the comment that, um, you, you pointed out Sheetz specifically. I don't know that necessarily we would ever feel comfortable making a direct- I don't know that necessarily we would ever feel comfortable making a direct outreach to one of these organizations. We, unfortunately, we, we kind of have to go through, through law enforcement. I mean, I'm, I, and just, it doesn't really matter. But I'm, I'm from Pennsylvania and I have to say, I'm, I, you know, it's very eye, eye-opening being in this room. But it's, makes me feel very hopeful that this room is so full of passionate people who care about people.
We do, I, we do. I mean, we know, and thank you, thank you. Because I, I get so tired of hearing, no one's doing anything about it. The city doesn't care. People don't care. I mean, we have so many organizations who go to work and do this every single day and it's exhausting. Like this work is exhausting and it's tired and it's mentally draining. And you're seeing people in crisis and hurting all day, every day, and you still show up and do your job. And I don't think people realize how exhausting that is and how hard so many people in this community work. I, I just, my goal was to get us all on the same page. So that average community member who's sitting in the comments section right now, probably complaining that we're not doing enough, knows what to do to help, right? Or, and, and how we can, we can get that lead information out. So a, a community member who wants to do a referral has that information and how we put together an outreach team. And so we have this coordinator, then I think we're going to have to do this again. And I, I do want to talk next steps, but I think what we're going to have to do is hire this person. And then maybe we could have an all-day workshop or something, not like this, but between all of the organizations to say, okay, I'll take the lead on this. I'll take the lead on this. I'll take the lead on this. And how can we come together to fill those gaps? Cause I think it's clear that we have a lot of what we need. We have gaps too, but we do have a lot of what we need. We just need to coordinate. Delegate.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Wait, 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 wait. Listen, just because.
I mean, I'm sorry, but it is, it's true.
Just because Sheetz is in the room and HPD's in the room, I don't want this conversation to be secular to the city of Hagerstown. All right?
It's not.
All these organizations out here are, are providing a countywide service. So it's important as we head down this road, that we, that we keep in mind that this is not secular to the corporate boundaries of the city of Hagerstown. We are a city of forty thousand people surrounded by a community of eighty thousand people. So it is much bigger than the corporate boundaries. And in about attracting it to the city, this is a countywide issue and it is a countywide priority. And it should remain that way through the entirety of this con- conversation.
And I'll tell, I'll tell you as.
Countywide, but there's more in this downtown area than in the outside.
Cause it's a city.
It's a city. And I would, I will, I will only add, as someone, and I think a lot of my council members who have gone to different, uh, seminars and things as well. I mean, we go to Maryland Municipal League seminars twice a year. I went to the National League of Cities seminar twice now. And in every single conference, every single time, these issues are discussed across our state. This is not specific to Hagerstown. This is not specific to Frederick. This is, I mean, every single time you have a group of a hundred and fifty-eight municipalities that come together and say, we're really struggling with substance use issues. How are you guys doing it? What are you guys doing? We're really struggling with homelessness. Like this is not, it's just like dirt bikes. One of the number one topics at the summer conference was dirt bikes. Believe it or not, this isn't a Hagerstown issue. It's a state issue, a statewide issue, excuse me. So I, you're right. This isn't just, this isn't just a Hagerstown issue. But I'm sorry, delegate.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Keller. Could, I think I heard you say more than once that there seems to be some, uh, pushback or some impediments to meeting the needs of the people. And I ain't the smartest person in the room. That went over my head. Can you kind of put it in a nutshell, what, what that is? I think you mentioned that there's some pushback to, to do whatever it is that everybody feels we need to do, but there is some pushback. What is it that we're, I'm sorry?
I want to hear the nutshell.
Me too. So we, there was money for a crisis center several years ago and RFPs went out. And, um, there was Senator Quarterman and former Senator Seraphini did not want a crisis center in Hagerstown. And now some of the organizations that need to be involved, such as our hospital, don't want to be involved because of that political pushback. And it turned into a, what, we can't have it here. It should be here. Maybe it should be somewhere else. Maybe it should be here. But at the end of the day, we're still sitting here four years later with the same problem that has required the same solution. So we can't get certain organizations to play ball now, even though we have a half a million dollars in, in places that are, um, willing to come together, as you can see, to help.
Usually you have to figure out what the right name is before you get the right folks to, to put your fund together.
The state's help would be very helpful.
So I'm sorry, I was a little bit late. Unlike a lot of our code enforcement people in my neighborhood, when I say I'm going to do something and take a paycheck for it, I actually have to do it. So I'm curious, could a show of hands, who's here tonight that's involved in the homeless sheltering issue? Cause I didn't get to see.
And I'm sorry.
Okay. Live in my neighborhood? In, in Hagerstown downtown historic area? Uh-huh. No. You? No?
I live on East Baltimore Street. It's my neighborhood we're talking about.
You, so you live what, in the, the south part of South Cannon? Okay. Well, good for you for showing up and doing, you I can respect. The other people, I'm looking and saying, take your good deeds to your community. You thought we were doing such a wonderful job. If you have a four-seater car, there's some addicts I'd like to put in your car. In five years, I've watched our, um, poverty rate go from twenty-three percent to twenty-seven percent. It's unsustainable. And, you know, we're looking, how many people live in my neighborhood?
And so, okay.
Joey. You live in the downtown area.
Excuse me. This is, this is not a citizen comment meeting, sir.
Let me tell you, let me tell you one of the problems we're having. We can't get the, the weeds cleaned up in our neighborhood. We can't get anything done with the, with the street sweeping. We have seven hundred and fifty.
Excuse me. This isn't a citizen comment meeting. With all due respect, this was a meeting for organizations to come together to discuss solutions. This isn't a open session. I mean, you're welcome to be here and listen.
So we're not here talking about why the homeless are in our community?
Do you represent an organization that helps the homeless or the mental health services here?
Public meetings, no.
It's not a citizen comment meeting. No, this is a.
It's the meeting that you have behind our backs when you go ahead.
It's not on our backs. It's streaming live right now on two different channels. The meeting is streaming live right now. Everything you're saying is streaming live. Nothing behind your back. It was published just like all of our other meetings.
We're not allowed to speak at it.
No, this is a meeting for our service providers to discuss issues and solutions.
I did want to say thank you, Mayor, while I was here. When we had the problem with the, uh, the new treatment center that opened up across from the library and they won't even put light bulbs in their historic lights.
And they're, they're private organization and they're allowed to do that.
And you thought they were such a great idea, but what you didn't tell the rest of us when you said, wow, what a great thing for.
So we're not doing this in this meeting right now.
Five hundred using addicts onto our street.
No, they, no, they did not.
Yes, they do. Look at the statistics.
We're, we're not doing this. Yeah, we're, we're going back to our meeting now. Okay. Well, you can contact a private company because they're allowed to be here.
More poverty in our community.
Sir, you can either be quiet and let us continue our meeting or you can leave. Thank you.
You don't have to tell me. I know what this is about. This is about more dumping in our community and you up there not getting your jobs done. You should see, you want to see a picture, Mayor, of the seven foot.
Sir, you can, you can go now.
On my street.
You, you can go now. Thank you.
Yeah, you can continue to do your bad job.
I don't agree with you, sir.
No, you don't want to talk to him.
Jenny, no, you don't. Jenny.
You have a room full of people that appreciate each one of you and what you're doing. I know we're probably getting close to time, so one thing, and I don't want to cause a divergence, but one of the things you said was what can the city do? While we have Habitat for Humanity here, I don't know if Hagerstown Authority, Hagerstown Housing Authority is here, but just a little bit further down the pipeline of what we're talking about now, about affordable housing. So I saw your really exciting post yesterday. Um, so while we have Habitat, and it doesn't have to be today, but I want to have a placeholder. How do we get Habitat more houses that they can, they already have this wonderful, beautiful system in place? How do we get them some of those tax sale or, you know, this is outside my wheelhouse, but how do we get them some of those? Housing authority, because that's affordable housing. As our community grows, people are coming in and paying cash for houses in my neighborhood. It's going to make the affordable housing of what you earn here to what you can afford is what I mean by affordable housing. So I want to make sure that's on your radar too. They have wonderful systems in place and that's not necessarily right here where we are, but then it opens up that middle section. Potomac, uh, case management's permit supportive housing, then it gets people onto, to affordable housing. I want to say that piece with what you said, what the city can do.
Well, I know that we have in the past, uh, offered Habitat for Humanity homes at the city. And they did purchase some of those, you know, for the reduced price so that they could put their people in. But, uh, yeah, I mean, that, that program still exists that, that, that we offer that, that assistance to. The, the post though, if, if that house stays erect, uh, you know. Yeah, that has to come down. That's all there is to it. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, you know, but, but those are properties that, that can be utilized again. Yeah. I mean, that's why we're doing these, these, you know, tearing down these blatant, uh, blatant buildings. I mean, that's what we're for.
So I think that we, at least us, have a little bit of, of direction. And I think with the hiring of the coordinator and then having a planning session with all of you guys, that we can continue to make strides. Again, I appreciate all that you guys do. I just want to make sure we're on the same page and that we can get people the help we need, because we all know we have community members who are hurting. And if we can solve those issues, we need to. So I appreciate you guys coming and, uh, seeing what we deal with on a normal basis. And, uh, all of you guys being here. And, and again, if, if the city is, has a role to play that we're not playing, I would like to hear that. And it doesn't have to be right now. All of you guys know how to contact me and us. But if there's a role that the city needs to be playing that again, we are not filling, um, we are all ears on how to be better partners with you guys and with all of the organizations that are trying to help.
I'd like to speak to the council after the meeting is over.
Okay.
May I have a minute?
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else to add? All right. I appreciate all your time and everything that you do. If we could get a motion to go into special session, please. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, we need to wait for Tekeisha. We're, we still have a meeting to finish.
Yeah, we're, we're in a special session.
Yeah. We're, we're still in a meeting.
Yeah, just give us a minute. Yeah.
Hey, excuse me. Excuse me. Guys, we still have a meeting to finish, so if you could.
Yeah.
Sorry. I don't want to hit my gap. It feels like very authoritative. Guys, we still have a meeting to continue?
Okay. All right. So.
Thank you. All right. Up first, we have approval of program year 2022 CDBG annual action plan.
Madam, we remove for adoption of resolution approving the program year 2022 City FY 2023 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, authorizing the mayor to file an application for financial assistance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of seven hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred forty dollars for the Community Development Block Grant Program and further authorizing the mayor to execute all other documents relating to the city's Community Development Block Grant Program for program year 2022 City FY 2023.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of MOU, U.S. Post Office, forty-four West Franklin Street, Hagerstown, Maryland for assistance of Hagerstown Police Department.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council approval memorandum of understanding concerning the U.S. Post Office located at forty-four West Franklin Street, Hagerstown, Maryland for assistance of the Hagerstown Police Department, tacted as an agent of the postal service to enforce the rules and regulations contained in Title thirty-nine Code of Federal Regulations, Section two thirty-two dash one.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of reallocation of funds for 2022 summer camp from the Robert W. Johnson Community Center to the YMCA.
Madam Mayor, hereby. Madam Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of reallocating fifteen thousand in funding for the 2022 summer camp at the Robert W. Johnson Community Center, RWJCC to the YMCA. A resolution approving the 2022 summer camps and associated user agreements was approved on March twenty-second, 2022. The summer camp at the RWJCC will be operated by the YMCA as indicated in the user agreement with the RWJCC.
Second. Any discussions?
Just want to say again, uh, just a gigantic thanks to all of you that put this together in a very, very short amount of time. So that's how community works, right here.
Exactly. Thank you to everyone.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of IAFF local sixteen oh five contract.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the attached IAFF local sixteen oh five contract to be effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, through June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City administrator comments.
Oh, I got a lot of things. I'm not going to say.
That'll be at least ten minutes.
No, I just, uh, no, I, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate the discussion we had tonight. Uh, I, I think it's good for the citizens to see, um, to hear, so to speak, from the horse's mouths, uh, what is actually happening? And, um, what is actually attempting, attempting to be done, uh, to help fix the problem. And I appreciate, uh, this, this body, uh, providing, uh, the form for that discussion. That's all for me.
Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that came together to, within a short period of time to make the camp happen for the youth. I think that it's very important for the Jonathan Street community, for any community. But, um, in speaking in reference to the Jonathan Street community, to see that the community will come together and support them. It's, it's difficult if you're in the city position and you're also in community to try to convince residents that we're all trying to play nice together and we're all on the same page. And it's difficult if you constantly see things being snatched from the community versus people working together to keep things at, in the community. And so just thank you, especially thank you, Madam Mayor, um, and Scott, as well as, uh, other people for coming together and making that happen, but specifically you to my colleagues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't anything.
So speaking of community events, this Sunday at Wheaton Park is the Ruth Ann Monroe Summer Basketball League. Um, this will be the fifty-ninth year. Uh, we have two hundred and forty kids for a total of twenty-four teams. Um, this is made possible by the city of Hagerstown for allowing this event to take place at the Wheaton Park for fifty-nine years, as well as our sponsors, our volunteers, from parents to coaches. Um, it's, it's a great event that we have, uh, that we look forward to. And I encourage everyone to come out. We'll be there at three o'clock till nine P.M. So bring your lawn chairs, bring your positive spirits. Um, there's a lot of kids love up on. We're going to have a DJ. Uh, DJ Gifted Sun is going to be, um, joining us and also crab joint for a food vendor. So we keep it local. We keep our, our uniforms local. We have our entertainment local. We also have food vendors local. And, um, thank you to HPD that will be also joining us to make sure that we're safe.
How many weekends is that?
It's going to be eight weeks again. So we, our last day is September fourth on Sundays.
Uh, I'm just going to be quiet. Go ahead.
I just want to say, um, the, last Thursday was the Amish Outlaws down in, uh, the USMH Plaza. And it's always such a really great time to see that many people converge on, especially a Thursday evening. But I want to give a huge shout out to Steve Bachmiller, who was dancing. He was down there volunteering. He saw that there was like an everyone mail to get, you know, get a volunteer. And Steve Bachmiller, it was just really great because usually I only see him in here, planning commission meetings, so.
Talk video?
Just talking about history and a bunch of plans. So, uh, thank you, Steve. I think that it was great representation. So it was a good time. No, I didn't have a video. No, but I bet you, I bet Brittany Arizmane has it somewhere. Somebody has it. Anyway, it was, it's always a great time to have that concert down there, so.
Oh, I forgot to mention that at the Maryland Theater on Friday, Life Jennings, uh, will be performing. Um, and for those of you guys that don't know, Life Jennings is a major recording artist. He did, he was arrested at fourteen years old, got out at twenty-five years old, went to the Apollo one six times in a row and signed a major recording, uh, record deal right after that, straight out of prison. And so it's just amazing to see that he's going to be coming to.
And so it's just amazing to see that he's gonna be coming to our town, but also that all the talent going before is all local artists who work in our community, who live in our community. And, and tickets are thirty bucks. And you actually have a great lineup of local artists before you even get to, um, to Life Jennings. So just shout out to, to Colleen and his organization for bringing that and making that possible downtown.
So I just wanna piggyback on Imagine Hagerstown. It was incredible to see that many people downtown again. And shout out to Brittany and Cassie for all of their work and their ideas with the Throwback Thursday Bags. I have like twenty old Blues Best shirts now, a Blues Best bandana, a cup. But it was, that was a genius idea, it was a good night. Now, shout out to Hagerstown Hopes who put on their tenth Pride Festival this weekend on Saturday. I couldn't believe how many people were in Doubts Park. And I think they had like thirty vendors. I mean, it was really, really cool. A lot of performers, music, vendors, food trucks. It was just a great weekend. So thanks to them for keeping that up for the tenth year. And I hope everyone is ready tomorrow night at six P.M. Chief Kifer and I will be streaming live on social media, taking your questions.
I'll be calling.
So I'm gonna have my laptop out, taking questions from the comment section. And we're gonna address anything you wanna know about what HPD is up to, crime in our community, solutions happening in our community, and we're looking forward to it. So six P.M. tomorrow night.
Did you let him?
I'm sorry. And, oh, hey, we have a, a letter request for recommendation Bloom's Alley Good. All right, awesome, thank you. I said I needed to be out of here at six o'clock and it's five fifty-nine. So we're adjourned, thank you.
Marvin, you get, with the council, you get asked.